I call this regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order, start with roll call. Calvert?
Here.
Hofstra?
Here.
Jackson?
Lemieux?
Here.
Budke?
Here.
Orlowsky?
Romano?
Here.
Shlinsky?
Here.
I to him present with that we have quorum. We have approval of minutes, I believe they're just the minutes from the past hearing, correct? So, the approv- or motion to approve the minutes from last month's hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We have four item of bi- items of business on the agenda this evening, just to kind of explain how things will go. For each agenda item, there will be a chance for public comment. If you plan to speak on any of them, or if you think you might, I'll have everybody get at once, stand up and get sworn in in a minute. But we'll start with staff presentation for that item, then a presentation or presentation from the petitioner if they have one, then there will be a point for public comment, and then any questions from the commission, our discussion, and then a motion if we have one this evening. And that's how each petition will go. So if you think you're going to speak on an agenda item tonight, I would just ask that you stand now, raise your right hand, we'll get everybody sworn in at once, it takes about 30 seconds, otherwise we'll have to do you, do it for you individually later. Anybody that thinks they might speak? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give in the, in the, excuse me, in tonight's hearings is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so our first item of business is PZ 2402, 600 North Villa Avenue, annexation, plat of subdivision, zoning map amendment, special use and variation to allow parking in a street yard. Petitioner is Tomas, is it Redzian?
Yes, we are asking for a continuation to the next planning and zoning of May 19th, 2024, please. May 9th, sorry, May 9th, 2024.
Is there anyone here that was wanting to speak on that, given that nothing's been presented at this time? Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and take public comment on it since you're here. I prob- I don't have, what I'll tell you is, I can't answer any questions because I don't, I have not seen anything about it, so.
We are not requesting to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Straight continuance.
Okay.
But.
Obviously, there's still public comment available on the agenda later.
Yeah, that's, that is true, there is public comment on non-agenda items later. Actually, I'm just gonna re- make a request that we move public comments on non-agenda items up in the agenda. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna move public comments and non-agenda items up. So, what I, what I'm gonna say is, this petition, 600 North Villa Avenue, if you have something that you want to say about it, or in general, that's fine, no one up here has seen anything to do with it, so we can't comment, we can't answer questions unfortunately, it's still in staff's hands at this point, we have not been presented anything. So, if you have a comment, or whatever, please, under non-agenda items, you could do that now.
It was just a definition.
Please, could you just come up here to the, yeah, because we're being recorded, and we have a court reporter.
James Holub, H-O-L-U-B. And it was just to define what they meant by outdoor equipment and material storage.
Okay.
With the amount of property that is listed here, what were their plans on, you know, doing with it?
Yeah, so, yeah, we'd, unfortunately, I can't answer that because we don't know. But, that's being continued to the next meeting, which is the second Thursday of next month, so it's the 9th, is that what we, yeah, May 9th?
Okay.
It'll be the same time, same place, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chair, do you want to ask for any other comments at this time?
Yeah, I should do that. So, while we're on, uh, non-agenda items, is anybody in the public that, from the public that has comments or questions on any other non-agenda items?
Joe Amore, 309 East Maple Street, Villa Park.
I've been here in the past, and you know I'm advocating for, uh, development around the train station, I've always been trying to encourage you guys, I know it's, there's been some snags, and I know it's coming. But, uh, the other day, I was in Elmhurst on business, and I just snapped a couple of pictures of some of the transit oriented development around there, and I just wanted to leave this for you guys to look at. I'm gonna just pass it around, I don't need it back. The interesting thing was, with the second one, I hadn't seen the plans for, uh, the union until I saw that, uh, second building, it's called the Mark, across from the train station in Elmhurst, and they, it almost looks like it's the same developer. And if they can do that on Villa Avenue, you know, I know that there'll be a day soon when we'll be able to see something like that at the train station, so I just want to encourage you guys to keep up the good work, and thanks for being here and doing what you're doing.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, couple of things. First, let the record show that Commissioner Orlowsky has arrived. And then, we didn't actually continue that first item, we didn't take a vote on that, so we should do that, before we move the, the agenda around. So, is there a motion to continue PZ 2402 to a date certain of May 9th, 2024?
I'll make that motion.
Motion seconded, motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the motion is continued to May 9th, 2024. Yep. And then, did we need to swear in, or are we gonna do that after?
We're in.
The, hm, oh, everybody got sworn in as they came in? Cool.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, we had a couple of commissioners, including myself, that needed to be sworn in for the hearing, and our awesome clerks swore us all in as we came in the door. I just didn't know if she caught everybody. Thank you, Hosanna.
She wouldn't let me get by.
No, she would not let Mike get by, especially Mike. All right, so our next item of business is PZ 2404, for 806 South Michigan Avenue, variation for side yard setback, petitioner Scott and Renee Blondin. So we will start with the presentation from staff, whenever you're ready.
Yes, I am ready. So, the petitioner is requesting approval of a variation to allow the encroachment of a deck into the minimum 15 foot required corner side setback. This would be by 5.5 feet. Um, we're looking at a residential single dwelling district for this property.
Residential single dwelling?
Welling. Mm-hmm. For the property, um, they are on a corner lot with some unique characteristics, they have a non-conforming interior side yard setback and rear yard setback, and an existing deck in the corner side yard, uh, that is in need of repair, so they are requesting the variation to allow them to reconstruct the deck, um, in the corner side yard setback, same location as it is now. The deck would be 12 by 23 feet, um, and it would be setback from the property line by 9.69 feet. So, the zoning ordinance allows the, uh, for residences specifically, it requests a variation in order to grant relief or strict compliance with the regulations of the zoning ordinance. Um, they have to prove, um, it's intended for a practical difficulty or practical hardship, um, caused by the law enforcement of the zoning ordinance. So although there's an existing deck at the location, which was actually permitted in 1998, um, they lose their non-conforming status if the deck is fully demolished, um, and they wouldn't be able to reestablish the deck unless, you know, in complete compliance with the current zoning ordinance. So, um, because of the such, uh, specific, um, location of the house, uh, there is no ability to construct a deck elsewhere on the property. So we think the request meets the intent of the code.
Okay. Um, so petitioner have anything they want to say this evening? Yeah, just, uh, please name an address for the record and...
My name is, um, Renee Blondin, 806 South Michigan Avenue, Villa Park. We just really, we wanted to repair it at first, but since code change, since Tom De Alessandro built it for us in 1998, and we wanted just to rebuild it, or, you know, redo it, but, um, as Stephanie said, we had to go to the variation because of code change and different things. And she informed us that our front of our house is really on Madison, which we never knew, our deed doesn't say that, you know, the county doesn't say that, nobody says that. So where our front door is, where we always thought was our front yard, so I guess it's our side yard. So that's all we're requesting, is that we, you know, it's 25 years old, or almost 26 years old, and it needs, um, repair.
Okay.
And different things, and since code change, we want to bring it up to code.
Sounds good. All right, thank you very much. Anyone from the public wishing to, uh, comment or question on this agenda item? All right, I see, uh, yeah, please, come up and...
Tom De Alessandro, D-A-L-E-S-S-A-N-D-R-O, 843 South Michigan. As Renee mentioned, yes, back in 1998, I was the original builder of that deck, and underneath that current deck is a concrete patio, that, which was in existence, so when we pulled the permit at that time to build the deck, it was just basically to build over the existing concrete and put new stairs and everything. So like now, as Renee had mentioned about, they, you know, the deck is 25 years old. Structure wise, I think the underside is all still intact because of the way that I built it, but, yes, the boards and the handrails can be redone because they are 25 years old. So, but, like I said, you know, back then, when I pulled the permits for it and everything, everything was, you know, no problems, we had it inspected, we did 48 inch holes and everything, so I think, you know, for them to have it refurbished wise, I don't see any major issues on that, I don't see why it'd, you know, it would have to change size or anything like that. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item? All right, seeing no one, any questions from the commission?
Just a point of clarification for, for Mark and Stephanie, um, when the code says that existing non, uh, a non-conforming thing can be repaired and maintained, why doesn't that, why doesn't that qualify in this, or is it because of the?
The extent.
The extent of it encroaching into the corner side yard?
And the extent of the repair.
Oh, okay.
So it's still on the permanent view, so there will maybe additional changes and corrections during the next days.
Got it.
But, as we noted, it was permitted, it's all good on that.
Yeah, yeah, right, uh-huh.
Now that we're looking at, or code, maybe additional requirements.
So it kicks it into a different category beyond the repair of an, an existing non-conformity?
Yeah, and then to, to clarify, to make it, um, so there's no ambiguity, applying for the variation getting approved, lots of minutes.
And there is an increase of one foot, um, for constructability purposes, as Mark pointed out during our review, what is sold in 12.
Sure.
Feet, so, that was the increase in the one foot, just makes it easier.
All right, any other questions? Any discussion? And if there's no discussion, then I would entertain a motion to approve PZ 2404, 806 South Michigan. Somebody wants to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to recommend approval of PZ 24 dash 04, for the variation from section 14 dot 1 dot 9, to allow the deck to encroach into the 15 foot, uh, requirement corner side yard setback of 5.5 at 806 South Michigan Avenue.
Okay, we have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion is seconded, is there other any questions or comments on the motion? All right, roll call vote. Calvert?
Yes.
Hofstra?
Yes.
Lemieux?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Orlowsky?
Yes.
Romano?
Yes.
Shlinsky?
Yes.
I to vote yes, with that, our recommendation will pass to the village board, um, they can accept, reject, or modify as they see fit. Thanks and good luck.
Thank you.
So the next item is PZ 2407, for 626 North Addison Road, a special use, petitioner Barry We'll start with staff presentation, then it'll be your chance, okay? They're gonna fill us in first, thanks.
Okay, so the next petition is for, uh, the consideration of a special use for body art service at 626 North Addison Road. The zoning district for this property is Convenience Business District, C1, normally intended Business District, C1, normally intended for small scale, um, convenience businesses. So the request is for Body Art Service to operate a tattoo business. The zoning ordinance specifically allows for the right to request a special use per section 11.4. While this requested use is not allowed by right in the district, it may be allowed only for you to approve in accordance with the special use procedures. Per our section, our U section 6.4.4, um, Body Art Service is defined as tattoo and body piercing establishments, as defined in 410 ILCS 4 slash 1. They must be established in accordance with our chapter 13, um, of village ordinances. As part of our staff review, we looked at the site, um, shown on exhibit A, the subject property is in a shopping center, um, with various different uses, and so we have a districted parking lot that has sufficient parking for the business. So on the site plan on the screen, it's the one in red. And we are only requesting the special use approval for that specific unit, which is 626, not the full shopping center.
That's it? All right, um, petitioner, if you've got something to say, please come up now and, uh, your name and address for the record, and then...
My name is Albarico Tuazon the second, T-U-A-Z-O-N.
You're gonna have to spell your name.
My name is A-L-B-A-R-I-C-O, my last name is Tuazon, T-U-A-Z.
C-U-A?
T, uh, T-U-A-Z.
Z?
Yes, O-N, the second, yeah.
And what was your address? Did you study it early?
Yes, uh, 626 North Addison Road, Villa Park, uh, 601 B1.
81?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, um, yeah, I'm here for like, uh, petitioning for the zoning, uh, for the first tattoo shop in that area. I do believe that, um, if I put that shop in there, I would bring more business towards the other tenant, especially for 7-Eleven and the chiropractor, because those are two main things that we really need, and our client as well, too, so, yes.
Good, thank you. Before you sit down, I have a, I have a quick question.
Yes.
How long have you been doing Body Art, and did you, are you moving from another location, or?
So, um, I started 2013, and then my mentor and, and I put up the shop Tattoo Boulevard in Elston.
Okay.
And then, um, I decided to put up my own, because I've been having my own clientele, and it's pretty much the same thing whenever, whenever I tattoo in Tattoo Boulevard, I'm just by myself, so I want to have to, I want to have my own tattoo shop, and then, um, promote more like Islander Tattoo, because that's what I try to, um...
More what?
Islander Tattoo.
Say it again?
Islander, Island- yeah, Islander Tattoo.
Thank you.
Yes, so that's what we, um, trying to, um, tell, um, other people that, especially like Filipinos and Samoan, that we do have our own in, here in, um, Illinois, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. What neighborhood are you going before? Elston?
Yes, in Elston.
Okay. All right, um, okay, any, uh, public comment on this agenda item? Okay. I asked my question early, but any other questions from the commission, for staff or for the applicant?
No, I actually went by there yesterday, and the, the plaza could use some business.
Mm-hmm. It's good.
I appreciate the, uh, the consideration of, as your artists will be waiting over quite a bit, um, the consideration for bringing potential business to the neighboring business.
The day that I went to check the place, I went to 7-Eleven right away, so that, um, person putting business away in their spot, and then when I saw the chiropractor, it was way better for me to move in that spot rather than to, um, drive over the very business and whatnot.
Smart move, I appreciate it. And sure, sales revenue from the 7-Eleven will go up?
Yeah, that's fine.
So any other questions or discussion? I know, uh, 20 or 30 years ago, tattoo parlors, as they were called, had a bit of a stigma, but today, I'm probably kind of an oddball because I don't have one, so...
You didn't play enough sports.
Yeah, didn't join the military, didn't play enough sports, yeah. Yeah, so, now it's kind of the norm. If there's no other questions or discussions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of PZ 2407, for special use of body art service at 626 North Addison Road.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Questions or comments on the motion? Roll call vote. Calvert?
Yes.
Hofstra?
Yes.
Lemieux?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Orlowsky?
Yes.
Romano?
Yes.
Shlinsky?
Yes.
I to vote yes, and with that, our recommendation will pass to the village board. Good luck. All right. The next item of business is PZ 2401, 100 South Villa Avenue, zoning map amendment, plat of subdivision, vacation of a public right of way, uh, special use for planned unit development, petitioner David Lyon. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, uh, this evening, we have, as the chair pointed out, um, a development request, including zoning map, subdivision with vacation, and then a special use for a planned development. Uh, this project is collectively referred to as the Union. You guys have seen this before in the past, in a previous iteration, they came before you for a concept plan, um, and then they went forward, um, with a preliminary zoning approval, where you recommended approval for a slightly different, um, look and feel, um, and then, the project got stalled while the creation of the tip 7, um, had to happen. And then since that time, or essentially the last year, the petitioner has been working on, um, design, engineering, architecture, all that good stuff, and they came to what you guys see in your packet today, um, which goes back to the original concept plan of a seven story building, and, uh, where'd it go? Um, 224 u- residential units, 7,500 square feet of commercial, uh, that rooftop amenity space, which was on the previous plan, is still here, and then, uh, 312 total parking stalls, which, if you recall, 94 of those are for public use. Um, and the original number was 100, we are at 94 today, some of the things that changed was the reconfiguration of the public parking, an increase in handicap stalls in that area, and the addition of EV charging stations. So those things weren't part of the original one, now they're state law to have EV, so that ate up a little bit of room, so we're at 94 public, but those additional improvements. The zoning map amendment, um, it is currently, the lot is currently zoned to different zoning districts, uh, the MXT and the MXR2, so it's a zoning map amendment to the MX2, um, getting it all under one zoning lot. And, uh, the properties to the north and the south are also that same MX2 district. The plat of subdivision, um, it's taking, um, three parcels, which underneath that actually has 10 platted lots, and that vacated right of way. The vacated right of way is shown on this, uh, image here in that red triangle, um, to anyone else, it would look like a parcel or a lot, it's actually right of way, so we're vacating that to square off the block. Um, it is not vacating Wildwood, it is not vacating Villa, it is just that anomaly right of way that's, that's there. Um, and then consolidating everything that I just said into one single lot subdivision. Um, and then we have the, the site plan, and some, what do you got here? Site plan, which shows, um, that is the overhead view, um, you see the roof and the amenity space, um, we have the vehicular access on the north, um, the in, right there in the center of the block, and then the out, closer to the intersection, the residence connection is off the western edge, and then the front of the building on Villa is all the storefront or the commercial space, which is the lobby for the residences. Next up, we discussed previous, there's the EV start, uh, EV charging station locations, and the reconfigured public parking. We believe the flow is significantly better than before, um, and this has no dead end connections in this, um, design. Uh, second floor is all parking for the residences, um, we cared a little bit less about their flow, because all of these are actually numbered, so they're going to their specific stall. Um, we worked with, um, the architect and the petitioner on still enhancing it a little bit, but we understood that it was trying to get as many parking stalls as we could on this floor for the number of bedrooms and units that they have. The second one really shows the amenity space a little bit better, um, this is the third, yep, third floor, um, there's the, the pool, the outdoor areas, all the amenities that I'll let, um, David and, and Jason and Ann speak about, and then the remaining floors are all identical, uh, four, five, six, and seven, it's the same rinse and repeat, bedrooms throughout. Um, elevations, uh, very similar to the previous, except that they are one story higher, um, because, uh, the previous one was six, the lower level parking was underground, now the lower level is what we call the first floor, so there's nothing below grade in this new design. Uh, we, through the, uh, recent review, we removed some of the signage elements that, um, well, we adjusted some of the signage elements, so now there's, um, flat channel letter signs, and, um, the relocation of the garage doors, as you can see on that top el-. and, um, the relocation of the garage doors, as you can see on that top elevation on this, on this energy. And then the renderings that they have submitted. Um, the top left one is looking, if you are standing at the intersection of Villa and the Great Western Trail, which I think is a nice addition to that particular area, so. That is essentially staff's overview, as you know, so special use for planned development. So anything that you like on there, anything you don't like on there, call it out. We can, we can potentially work with the petitioner on making some minor adjustments, but it is a cohesive project, it's not like a variation where we need to have hardship. It's, do we like this project, this is a, it's one big entity. And yeah, if any other questions from the board, I'm happy to answer it, but I'll turn over the petitioner if you're willing.
Great. Whenever the team's ready.
I think we're ready.
Think you know the drill, but names and, yep.
Good evening, I'm David Lyon, and with me tonight is Anne Reckelhoff, who's Director of Development with the Marquette Companies, and also our architect, Jason Corb. Good to see you again, it's been a couple of years, I think. Um, a little more history, um, uh, from what Mark described. You'll recall when we initially, uh, started the process, as Mark indicated, it was a seven-story, um, building. Um, at that time, we were concerned about, um, staying under the height limit for, uh, to meet code. So that's why we defaulted to a six-story building, pushing, uh, the development underground one story. Since that, uh, point in time, since your, um, uh, unanimous approval of the six-story design, a couple of things have happened. One, uh, Jason and Corb Architects have figured out a way through plank and beam construction of concrete, he can describe that in more detail. We were able to design a seven-story building and stay under that height limit. The other thing, um, that we did since your approval is we embarked on environmental research. So we engaged the environmental team of V3 Engineering.
V or V?
V3, V as in Victor, three, Engineering, um, their environmental consulting division, to perform a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, um, uh, report. The Phase 2 investigation, um, which included sonar study, and also many, many, um, soil borings of the site, discovered that on the one-third, roughly one-third portion, western portion of the site, there are existing underground storage tanks. There used to be a fuel facility there that was vacated at some point in the past, so there are existing underground storage tanks. Additionally, there's contaminated soils that surround those tanks. As you move further west of the site, that contamination decreases, but still, um, exists to a certain degree. So our petition here is really a function of trying to get to, uh, project economic feasibility and try to mitigate those environmental costs. So despite the fact that we hope, uh, with your approval, we'll be able to come out of the ground and not excavate, we will still have to remove those storage tanks, and we will still be required to remove those contaminated soils around those tanks. But for the balance of the site, we'll be able to encapsulate, um, those soils, because there's fewer contaminants. So long story short, um, our petition tonight is really driven by economic feasibility for the project. And so, um, with that, I will turn it over to Jason, uh, to, if you wanna run through.
Oh, perfect. Good evening, you don't need my name, do you? Jason Corb, K O R B as in boy. I think Mark did a pretty good job. I think mo, I, I haven't been here for two years, but I see, I think, mostly all familiar faces. So you may recall, those of you that were here in 2022, um, in, I believe it was March of that year, we came here with basically this proposal. It was to be, uh, we weren't asking for a vote that night, we were just trying to take the temperature of, of the, uh, of the board and the public. So there was some public comment, um, expressing concerns on the height of the building, which we took to heart, and that's why we started examining this, um, the idea of this basement. But as David, um, and then we came back with a six-story version in, I believe, May of that year. But as David indicated, the site proved to be more contaminated than we knew at that time, and so, the difficulty in hauling that, that nature, the nature of those contaminants are such that the, the, the removal method for them is extremely challenging. So, uh, we were directed to go back to the seven-story building, um, and, but this plan is very similar to the one that you saw in, in 2022. We started out with this podium level of parking. The first hearing basically took that level, moved it down two floors to a floor underground, and now we've come back to you having put it back in its original location. But the, um, this is, this is basically the building that you saw in, in March of, um, 2022. The only updates we did to these renderings were, we made two changes, other than the ones that, um, that were mentioned by Mark. Uh, one was to, uh, get staff comfortable with the circulation in the public parking, and then two was to get, we had blade signs, they were going in over the, uh, property line, it's not allowed. So the only other real change here is that we, um, changed the signage, and I apologize. The third change is, we've elected to make the second floor of parking enclosed and tempered. Um, so it serves as a buffer, those of you in the business know that, otherwise we'd have to have a heated plenum, and it's a maintenance nightmare, and so, so the second floor becomes enclosed and heated, so. But architecturally made to look like, you know, the floors above, so.
Can you flash to the image of the commercial on the trailhead?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there. So it's important to note, we have maintained our commitment.
Sorry, what's your name again?
David Lyon, O Y L. Um, so we have maintained our commitment to provide gross about 8,000 square feet of space there that fronts Villa Avenue. When you net out service, uh, function spaces there at the corner, some offices, leasing offices, et cetera. Well, I think we'll have about 7,500 square feet of space, which, uh, potentially provides, uh, up to two, um, tenants, um, probably targeting food and beverage for those locations. So that, you see the entrance there, um, at the trailhead, with, um, uh, a nice plaza, um, outside, that will be part of construction. Did we wanna address materiality at all? Uh, no, you brought samples.
We did bring the samples, they're the exact same samples you saw two years ago, but I'm happy to, um, keep them.
We do have at least one new person up here, so it wouldn't hurt if you've got him to, I think, just start him down on this end.
Start him over here. Special treatment.
Start him on the far end with the engineer. We'll hand him to the architect, and then.
So that is, uh, screening at the ground level parking, which will be open there, but, uh, the openings are in the incorporated metal to allow, uh, air to circulate through that parking. This is our proposed face strip for most of the building. This is a high-quality cement board siding, so any of the dark material you see in these, um, is some variant of that material. Generally flat panel, um, street facades, and. And then again, um, that is our storefront window frame. And this is, um, both our accent metals and our unit windows to match that color as well.
And then while you're looking at those, um, I worked with V3 Engineering. We went back and we reviewed the minutes and notes and questions that came up and follow-up that you had requested that we do. And one of those items was to update the tra, uh, traffic impact analysis to reflect the fact that the, um, rec center's gonna be coming online, just in advance of this building coming online. So we in fact did that. Um, so I could give you the, um, sort of executive summary of that, if you would like.
That'd be helpful.
And I'll, I'll have to read some of this, because it comes from the engineer report.
That's fine. We've all been there.
Didn't have, didn't have no time to memorize. So, um, V3 did the analysis, if I didn't say that, and it didn't, it was based on real conservative traffic data, in their opinion, as it was requested by the village, and includes assumptions of the new rec center, as I stated. Obviously, the proposed project, our project and the rec center will result in increased traffic to the area. However, Villa Avenue will still function as it currently does, with limited traffic impacts, as Villa Avenue is not stoplight-controlled, um, at the main, uh, project intersection, which is really Wildwood and Villa Avenue. They did indicate, um, that, um, the added vehicle trips will result in, in some, uh, delay time for eastbound traffic there. But, uh, the added trips and increased delays of that eastbound traffic at Wildwood do not result, in their opinion, of necessitating a traffic light there, okay? Um, however, um, one of the recommendations they made to us and to the village is that during the PM peak hours, the eastbound queue along Wildwood may back up past, uh, the exit, uh, from our building. And so what they're recommending, ending is that we provide signage, um, uh, that instructs motorists not to block that means of ingress and egress, if, if they can avoid it. So that, that's the high-level summary of that report.
Okay.
That's made available to the planning department.
Okay, thank you. All right, do you guys have anything else, or, oh, about it? Okay. Thanks. Any public comment or questions? Please.
Judy Worley, 625 East Van Buren in Villa Park. W H E R L E Y. And my question was just about the mitigation for containment for the, uh, contaminated soils and the, you know, when that's uncovered. And then how long does that part of the process take?
Okay.
Um, so the, the purpose of, um, remove, excuse me, removing the basement would be to disturb as little of that soil as possible. So we would, as is, as is required, basically be excavating a four-foot trench around the perimeter of the building for an exterior frost wall. So any contamination in those areas around the perimeter will have to be hauled to an approved landfill. That process happens very quickly. And then once the interior foundations are protected by that frost wall, they only need to go down like a foot or two, so they can dig one of these footing holes in a matter of hours. That would immediately be, um, loaded onto a truck, and again, taken to an approved landfill. And then the way that the balance of the soil is, um, mitigated is it's capped with a concrete slab. Underneath that concrete slab will be likely installed, uh, vapor mitigation system, because these contaminants off-gas, and so there is a mitigation system that gets whatever minor amounts of off-gassing out and up away from people. And so that's sort of the three-part strategy.
Okay.
Of course.
Do you anticipate smells?
No.
Or smell?
You may smell some gasoline when the tanks come out.
The naphthalene?
Gasoline.
But the naphthalene was also in the report.
Mm-hmm. That I don't know, I honestly don't know. But again, the point of the system is to get it up and above where people would have to smell it. And also breathe it, because it's not healthy.
And I'm sure whatever's done there is better than what's happening there right now.
Nothing good is happening there right now.
No.
So, yes.
Any questions from the, any other public comment, I should ask? Okay, uh, questions from the commission, for staff or for the applicant?
Jason, I had one question on the, um, the, the parking, you know, the, the exit for the, uh, public parking. I did note the proximity to the White Hen, um, exit, and just wondering if there's gonna be any modifications to the exit, uh, exiting, uh, from the White Hen. It seems, it seems like that.
White Hen?
7-Eleven.
7-Eleven. Oh, 7-Eleven, I'm sorry.
It used to be a White Hen.
You're dating yourself.
Exactly. I knew what he was talking about.
Yes, we all do.
I age myself.
I don't understand the question.
I got it.
It's actually for Mark.
Yeah, oh, okay, see, yeah. Uh, what, he, um, what we're referring to is the access on the north side of, um, the road. No, there are no proposed improvements to the access points in the existing conditions. Uh, do, I would like to remind, though, the tri-trail connector is actually coming down this block, and is going to be put on the south side of the road, um, nearest the, the building that we're talking about right now, which was not the original design, so I do wanna point that out. So through that construction project we're talking about, there are no new improvements to those access points. They will be in their current location, as you see now.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of other things that I got out of the presentation that might be of interest to you. The other things that we'll be doing is we'll be returning a swath of land, um.
David?
Oh, sorry.
Returning a swath?
A couple other items that might be of interest to you. Number one, we'll be returning a swath of land that we current, the site currently, uh, encroaches upon the Great Western Trail. So we'll be returning green space, um, to that area. And then additionally, we'll be, um, we've been working with, uh, Mark and his team, who's helping us work, work with ComEd, um, to relocate the power lines in the north of our site across Wildwood to the northern side. And then we will, there are three, um, overhead poles, overhead line, or one overhead line with three poles will be, uh, bearing those. So those will be removed, removed, and, and the line will be, uh, buried underground. So currently, there will, uh, one line on the, um, southwest corner encroaches, yeah, the airspace of the site. So hopefully ComEd will take that into consideration and be cooperative with us in that, in that effort.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Judy Worley again. So is there gonna be, uh, a change to Villa at all? Like a turn lane there, a widening for more traffic? Is there gonna be like a traffic and safety meeting after this? Any change?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, if you've got an answer to that, Mark.
Sure, um, there are proposed improvements to Villa. They include the additional parallel parking and the incre, and the one additional handicap stall on Villa. Right, yep, thank you, right there. Uh, there is no intersection changes proposed at this particular location, so there is no addition.
Like left turn lane?
Nope, nope.
The two?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and the traffic study that David had cited earlier has already gone through engineering review. Um, that's why we asked for some additional analysis, which is what they submitted today. So yeah, there's no, as he said, no, no light, no signalization required, no turn lanes required, does not warrant it.
And then no concern going over the prairie path? I mean, uh, with additional traffic?
Correct, yep, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from the commission?
With regards to the environmental work that you've already taken with the Phase 1 and the Phase 2, knowing that you're gonna have to remove the USD and plans to do so, uh, is the intent to apply for the NFR as well?
Yes.
Just making sure.
I have a question, Mark. Given the fact that we're, uh, going through the rees, the map amendment to an MX2, as well as the fact that it's a PUD, but the PUD sort of follows the underlying zoning to the best that it can, um, what, what very, not really variations, but what adjustments, what are the discrepancies between what's being proposed and what's sort of allowed within a, within the MX2?
Sure, we refer, uh, deviations. We refer, deviations. That's what you're looking for. So the biggest one obviously is the number of stories. So four is the MX-2. And then there's a, the ability to do a special use only to get an additional two stories, which gets to six, which is what they were talking about originally. By going the planned development route, you can go to essentially whatever number you'd like through a planned development, but clearly we're asking for, or they're asking for a seven in this instance. That is the biggest deviation by far, right? Aside from that, it's very, very close to the guidelines within the MX-2. Appropriate uses on the ground level facing the primary street, rear access to the garage and the parking. Obviously, we have side access, but it's not the main. So it's technically a deviation, but it's how it should be designed. So it's those kind of things. Transparency windows along, meaning the 70% along the front, we really went down the line to try and hit as many as we could or be within a couple of percentages. So we don't itemize a list of deviations through a planned development because we cite it's a complete package. If you like it, love it, or not, we would look for amendments to it. But it's really, really close to the MX-2 standards. Besides the height, clearly that's the biggest one.
Right.
Side to side?
Correct.
Yeah. Because I recall back when we were, when this was sort of happening two years ago and the memory is foggy, but we were in the whole zoning change, we were bouncing back and forth whether we could maybe be MXT, which would have allowed that, but that introduces a whole nother set of sort of different density restrictions on the site.
Yeah, the MXT is significantly different than the MX-2 in this instance. It made sense to go MX-2 for the complete project that we're looking at today. I would like to point out, the site plan that we're looking at right now, the top left is actually the to-be-constructed curb line for the new rec center. So it is showing what it, how.
In context.
Yes, exactly. In context to what is going to be built. We had them update that instead of what we had remembered of what was the White Hen access. Now we know that it's what is going to be built as opposed to what was built. So looking at the future in its entirety, which is why the crosswalk is a slight angle because it's matching those things up. And then the drop-off is on that, yep, right there. So just to point that out, forgot about that.
We're just 11 feet taller. I mean, is that essentially or whatever, another floor taller? We didn't make any adjustments to floor-to-floor height to sort of.
No, because our overall height is dictated by the building code.
Right.
So we cannot increase floor-to-floor heights.
Well, no, not increase, but I'm just saying the whole playing both ends against the middle. We know we pulled ourselves out another 12 feet. I don't know if we were trying to sort of.
What, what is the difference in height between this proposal and the previously-approved proposal?
The top of this proposal's roof is at 84 feet. The sixth story was at 72 feet and change.
Okay. So it's 12. Okay. Eleven, 11-plus.
11-plus. So we still do need to have a transition zone at the lid of the podium to let all the plumbing elbow and all that kind of stuff. So even though our ceiling height in the parking only needs to be eight foot two, we still need another two feet for structure.
We're not building watches if we're going to have to, yes.
And only because we're talking about, even though it's not really your guys' purview, they are constructing this to the new building code that was in effect now, not in effect when they first came in front of you.
Well.
But that building.
They would have to.
Of course. And that building code did not really change.
Not just height, all the other.
I understand.
Yeah, that's all.
I mean, they haven't submitted, they didn't submit for permit.
Yeah, just informational.
Under the previous.
Generally, we try to comply with the building code.
Yeah. Generally.
Only because that changed since the last time we're here am I bringing it up.
But it's great to bring it up.
Good rule of thumb.
I operate under.
But the update in the code did not change the rules for this class of construction. But there's other things that are probably add-on. Normally, a lot of them are around energy efficiency.
Exactly.
It's good for everyone, so.
A question for you, actually nothing to do with why you're here, but out of curiosity, trash pickup, how, where is that northwest corner of this building? Is that, is it a dumpster? Why is that?
So there's a trash and recycling chute in the corner, in that corner of the building. So residents can just take their trash and recycling to the chute. It goes down into this trash room that has doors onto Wildwood. And this is pretty typical. A building this size, probably three times a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, ish, three to four times a week, truck will pull up on the curb, they roll the dumpsters out, they throw them in the truck, they're there for 10 minutes, three to four times a week. And then they go on their way.
Is that shared garbage with the commercial space too, or they have their own trash pickup? I say a little space on the east side, but.
We're still working through that, but, yeah. We added, that's a recent addition.
Anne Reckelhoff, R-E-C-K-E-L-H-O-F-F. Typically, so the trash chute for the residents will have trash and recycling, so two chutes for each of those. We typically have a compactor in those to help with trash pickup. Our service team will pull them out, pull them back in, things like that. So they manage all of that. We manage oval team across the street, so they have trash pickup three, four times a week as well. Will be handled very similarly to that. Retail will have their own trash service. They handle that separately. We will help them with that, but they will typically have their own trash service for that.
My curiosity just came from if it's a food service, that's just.
Yeah, it is, it's a lot.
Different type of garbage.
Absolutely.
81 residential stalls, is that right?
I'm sorry?
81 residential parking stalls, parking spots, is that right?
On the first floor.
Yeah.
Or there's the second floor.
And then what, how, what was the count on the second?
So it's like, can we?
231.
So I'll give you the ratios to, so the presentation I did. Yeah.
Yes.
So there are 312 residential parking, all reserved. There are 94 public spaces, as we said, for a total 406, because as it relates to 312, is it right so far?
That's what I had, 312.
Oh, good. So as it relates to ratios.
But not, you said total.
Yeah.
But the 312, this is important, especially for Ann, it's a little over one parking spot
per bedroom count because it's important.
Which is our code.
Yeah. Yeah, just so you know, and the ratio's almost 1.4, you know, spots per unit. That's just on the reserved residential parkings.
That's what I was going to ask.
Reason that I, yeah, bring that up, and thank you for clarifying the just over one or whatever, the 1-point-something percentage point's going to be over per bedroom is because we have previously had submissions with bedrooms versus dens. And I don't want to get into the issue of what is actually truly called a bedroom versus the intent for a room to potentially escape the definition of a bedroom.
That was an error in our petition. I said including 94. That is in addition to, so.
That's on us. All right.
I guess I'll bring up the question that I have. I haven't seen, I looked through this the other day and I didn't see anything in there. Is there, seeing that we do have some water issues on both sides of the trail, one that goes all the way down Wildwood from Jewel, that's where it starts and it ends at that Is the Village and Public Works, are they going to take steps necessary to make sure that we don't have any water issues?
Yes, so through the permitting process, they'll be doing a fee-in lieu for storm water to help us fund any of the improvements that are in tribute to this particular site.
Okay. Because I know on the other side of the trail also, they get by the park there, they get about three, three feet of water over there.
Yeah.
Do you want to speak to? Sure. So these are, these are notes from our engineer who was unable to be here tonight, but with the land that's being sort of set back to the Great Western Trail, it's currently previously impervious, will become completely pervious. Our engineer estimates that just with that, there is a net decrease of 771 square feet of pervious cover. And any green roofs that we have on our third-floor amenity will be in addition to that. But more importantly, right now, the water hits that parking lot and it just sheets right to the east.
With contaminants.
Yeah, yes. So, you know, the, and we've been working, our engineer's been working with Village Engineering. So this will better control the flow of storm water because we are required to, it's not negotiable. So we believe that the storm water problem will be actually greatly improved by this project. And Engineering has analyzed the volumes that would come off of this property and existing storm sewer can handle it, so that's what I know about the water. And so any of that green roof would be in addition, be actually considered additional pervious surface? And the design of that roof is not finalized, obviously.
I'm not looking to hold you to, I'm looking to hold the Village. To make sure that they take care of the water issues.
Goes from you to me to them.
I liked it, the first proposal, I liked it, this proposal.
Other questions before we move into discussion? If there are other questions arise, we can always ask.
Excuse me.
I know when we discussed this before, I believe Commissioner Lemieux is the only new person since that, I believe. The, the original proposal we saw was seven stories. I'm not going to lie, I like the six stories better, but I also understand the realities that it brought seven stories back. I appreciate the, the effort to add glazing on the second floor, particularly along the street frontages. As opposed to the open mesh systems, which don't ever really read as transparency at the street. I understand why you have them at the ground level on the side streets though, for air circulation and so on. Anybody else have comments, discussion? Any particular issues anyone's noting or anything?
This seems palatable. It's an attractive plan. I'd like to see environmental media issue.
The only other comment that I would have kind of from a design standpoint, and I'm not, I don't feel that I necessarily need to tie this to a condition, I'm just going to say it, that the south elevation on the ground two floors, that's a lot of blank wall.
Say it again?
A lot of blank wall along Great Western Trail. So I'm not looking to add a ton of money to this project because I want to see it happen, but I would be mindful of the treatments that are used along there. Anything that could break that up beyond, I mean, it looks like you've got some relief and some small windows, but it's probably not going to really read. So whether it's a change in materials or banding or.
So I can, I could speak to that. A lot of that wall is close enough to the south property line that's being moved up that by code we are not allowed to have a lot of opening. The theory is they don't want fire jumping, you know, it wouldn't happen here, but the code's not that site-specific. They limit your opening because they don't want fire jumping from one structure to the next. So for instance, if you are between zero and three feet from a property line, you are allowed zero openings. If you're between three and five feet, it's 15%, and then the further you get away, it goes up. One thing we did discuss two years ago, and I don't know if ownership is still open to, is there was a potential for art on this wall.
I was going to say, even like some public art or, I mean, I guess it's private art technically, but viewable to the public or.
We could plant trees in front of it, right?
Yeah, change of color, well, trees probably not because they don't have.
Oh, three feet, oh.
Oh, I mean, you would have to plant trees in the area that's being given back to the trail, which is a whole different conversation, right?
Yeah, that probably.
We is the Village.
Well, yes, but I have, just, is that property going to the Village or to the county?
DuPage.
If the county's correct.
DuPage.
So that's, that's, yeah, that's.
You would have to work with them for them to be willing to accept the trees that they would go in that location. But yes, it, there's no landscaping shown in front of that. And if you guys recall out there, there's the butterfly gardens. There are some existing trees now. This obviously doesn't reflect any of that, but I'm not opposed to working with DuPage saying, can we get a couple more trees, but they have to sign off on it.
And on the ground floor plan, we actually call out restoring the butterfly gardens. And this drawing obviously doesn't show it, but.
Yeah, and I know, looking at the elevations, it's precast concrete, which limits what you can do in terms of changes of materials, obviously, or things like that, but.
But you can paint it.
But yes, there are things that you could, that can be done to break that up, even if it's just.
And the other, the other function it serves, which is why precast is used in parking structures so much, is on our second floor, we actually need to have a crash barrier. They don't want cars driving out of multiple-floor parking structures. So the exterior wall has to have a certain level of strength that's, again, dictated by the code. And precast is a cost-effective way to achieve that.
Otherwise, I'm a big fan of the plan as a whole.
Give your suggestions to the other, and we'll, we'll work it over, see.
Well, you're going to, you're going to work your landscape architect over.
Or nurse.
Yeah. Or nurse.
All right. Any other comments, discussion? And if there's none, then.
I just have one. If, if it's approved tonight, how soon until it goes to the board?
There will be a gap in between your guys' recommendation and Village Board approval. As I mentioned earlier, TIF 7 was created while they were working out their deal. There is a economic incentive tied to this particular project, and we need to have that document wrapped up before we take forward the zoning approval. It'll be one entire approval, zoning, economic incentive, and then the redevelopment. So.
A date?
We're, yeah, no, I mean, we're minimum a month out.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. We're still, we're still shooting for this construction season, so we're trying to work as quickly as possible, but we do have to dot those i's and cross those t's.
All right. If there's no other comments or discussion, then it would be time for a motion. Make a motion to recommend approval, PZ 2401, for a special use for a planned unit of development per Exhibit C, a zoning map amendment for mixed transitional district MXT, mixed residential district two, MXR2, to mixed-use Main Street District MX2, the final plot of subdivision with the vacation of public right-of-way per Exhibit B for the project coming later. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second to that.
Motion is seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, roll call vote. Calvert.
Yes.
Ostra.
Yes.
Lemieux.
Yes.
Ledke.
Yes.
Orlowsky.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Chlinsky.
Yes.
I too vote yes. With that, our recommendation will pass to the Village Board. Good luck.
Nice.
All right. Are there specific discussion items for this evening?
I don't have any specific discussion items, but I did want to formally introduce Michelle House. She is the new Deputy Director of Community and Economic Development.
Welcome.
Say hi, Michelle.
Hi.
That's all.
Anyone else have questions, comments from the commission for staff or generally speaking? No? Also, I don't see anyone else. So no additional public comments on non-agenda items? So I move that we adjourn.
So be.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.